Okay, it's December 18th. It's just a little bit before 10 o'clock. Roll call for Randy McMurphy here. David Hamel and John Clonter here. Number four, approval of the minutes, last meeting, regular meeting, December 11th, 2023.
I move to do that, if somebody has anything you want to.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five, discuss possible action regarding the survival flight membership. Survival flight, that's what it's called?
This is, this is Ryan.
Survival flight.
My name is Ryan Sand, I'm the Regional Director of Clinical Operations for Survival Flight in Oklahoma. We are in the process of opening up our fifth base in Oklahoma here, based at Sherwood Center today. The aircraft is actually on the helipad right now. We had a dedication to the aircraft blessing first thing this morning. And we are headed to Oklahoma City about lunchtime to go get it inspected by the state. We plan to be in service and operational by mid-afternoon today. It's a Bell 407 helicopter, which is what's shown on the brochures that you have right there, has the capability of carrying pilot, paramedic, nurse, patient. And then our aircraft also has the capability of carrying a family member if we transport a pediatric patient. So we take a kid, we'll take mom or dad or grandma and grandfather with us as well to whatever hospital we're going to. It will be available, obviously, for the hospital here, for surrounding hospitals that need interfacility transports, and then also for scene flights, including everything from local scene flights in town down to Little Sahara and all the many things that happen down in that area and the surrounding counties.
So how, so fill me in on how your flight crews work, I mean, how they rotate?
So we do, our flight crews do 24-hour shifts typically, sometimes 48, depending on call volume. The pilots rotate out during 12 hours. And that's our FAA rule, they have a 14-hour duty days and they're allowed to, I think they're allowed to be physically flying for a maximum of eight hours per day. They can be on duty for up to 14 hours maximum, so they switch at about 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM and then...
So they'll be housed right here in Albo?
Correct, we're actually using a house, a house that the hospital's letting us use at 1708 Murray, just down the street from the hospital. So we'll have the crew there 24 hours a day, the aircraft will live on the helipad unless we're moving it into the hangar. We've got hangar space at least at the airport, and we'll be buying fuel at the airport here, obviously. And so the only time that it won't be on the helipad is if we're on a flight. If we're hiding because we have thunderstorms or icing conditions or weather that we obviously don't want it outside in or we're doing maintenance or, you know, routine maintenance or repairs.
So, I mean, and you'll house three people or four at a time?
Three, three at a time, three on duty at a time, yes, sir.
And so, so what if, what if they, you'll transfer somebody up here if they've got their flight time used up? If you're busy or?
Usually, so we, we have, each base has three people on duty at a time. So if we get to the point where they, you know, typically a pilot's not going to do eight hours of flight time in that day.
No, I'm just, but curious.
Yeah, and they would potentially, if they get to the point where they are unable to fly anymore or they timeout, for example, sometimes we'll have, say, day shift pilot ends up taking a transfer up to Kansas. They go up to Wichita, one of the trauma centers there, and they timeout. So the oncoming night pilot would drive up there and meet them, and then he would fly there. He or she would fly the aircraft back, and then the offgoing pilot would drive back.
And the, and the nurses that are with, are they going to help the hospital or?
If the hospital needs us, we do have a policy that we can go in and help. They have to, for liability reasons with a particular question, they have to.
Well, I was just, I've heard that, I just wanted to know.
Yes, yeah, if they need us, the way that they activate us is they call our dispatch center and say, hey, they have a patient going out, but we need help. Then we'll send our crew over that'll help out as needed. And if it turns into a flight, great, if not, we'll just document what they did and go back to it or whatever they're, you know, training or whatever they're doing.
Is this, this a bigger helicopter than the other crews have? What about wind?
So we don't have a wind restriction on the Bell 407. There are restrictions on the gust spread, so straight line winds are not really a big deal. If you have a big gust spread, which may be 10 to 15 knot gust spread, it gets really dangerous to land and take off because you can, you get hit by...
Do you guys also offer fixed winging or?
We do have a fixed wing, it's based in Batesville Architaph, it takes about an hour and 15, hour and a half to get here, depending on activation time. And we can use that if, you know, we have adverse weather, the helicopter can't fly in high air conditions, things like that. Yeah, and they, our fixed wing aircraft covers about a third of the country on a tank of fuel. We also have a St. Jude's contract with that one as well, so they fly kids back to St. Jude's on a weekly basis.
You guys, and why fly, you play good together?
We get along, we do. Yeah, we, we run into airbag crews all the time and they're always real nice.
Well, I mean, because we're going to continue both, I believe, maybe.
And, and that's what we typically recommend. We have quite a few areas where we'll have airbag and us in the same area, and we always recommend that people consider having both memberships because you could be driving down to Woodward and you're right next to an airbag base and getting a car wreck. Obviously, they're, they're not going to wait for us to fly down there. And then you're going to get the closest aircraft because that's how we make sure you get to the trauma center in a timely manner. So we, we always recommend that people consider having both, have both aircraft during the December meeting. And we, we have that, we have aircraft near airbag bases and vice versa throughout almost our entire system that runs from, I think Altus, Oklahoma is our westernmost base, and then Tallahassee, Florida is our easternmost base. So we cover a pretty good range of areas in between there.
How many have you got in Oklahoma?
This will be the fifth. We have one in Altus, one in Watten, one in Cushing, and then one in Keaton, which is just southeast of Oklahoma. So this is our, this is our northernmost Oklahoma base, I'm sure.
So what's the, what, what's the deal for us? I mean, what, I mean, what's going to cost us?
So, did you come to? So she has the information, because I don't deal with memberships specifically, I deal with the clinical management. I can tell you a little bit about it as far as, as far as that goes. Anybody who has a membership, if they have a family membership, it covers everybody that lives under their roof. So that includes if you have another relative living with you that's not necessarily immediate. You have a cousin that's living with you, they're in your household, they can still be part of that. If you get flung, we build the insurance company and there's no out-of-pocket cost whatsoever. So you never, you never see a bill from us, you'll see a statement probably that says, you know, what the insurance paid and then that it's covered through the membership, but there's no out-of-pocket cost at all.
And so the lady told me, she said it's $60 per household, and she said that's for the ground and helicopter both. It's not limited to just one or the other. She said that they also, like, as employees leave, since we've already paid for that employee, they'll hold that spot open, so when we have an employee take that spot, we can just send them the names and then that, they automatically, which is nice because on the other, right now, we just, they're, you know, they still have it and the new employee doesn't have it until we sign up again, so...
Did they say anything about outside of county, I mean, outside of us, that it's the same price for just an individual or?
For individual, it's $60.
And what's our group claim?
What's our group?
It's $60 per household.
Okay.
So it's 70, yeah, because it's 70 for, 70 for household normally.
Okay, so, so...
So we're getting $10 off.
No, no, well, I've, I've had some people that, I wondered about, if I've heard anything about what it's going to cost. Just for individuals, then what for us?
For individuals, mm-hmm, and 70 for household. Yeah. But it's, I like that we can switch the employees in and out because that's, that'll be nice for the new employee that automatically start getting covered. Just like waiting.
What do you guys want to do?
Just that person that leaves though, can they keep it?
Uh, they could probably keep it, they'd just have to call in and, and make the arrangements, which we could send them the information so that they could, that they have to pay.
But it'd probably go to 70 bucks if it is a...
No, we don't have any zoning or permits requirements. That's what they recently, we don't require a side if it's in the county. But you might, you'll have to register, but the county at their disposal.
Well, I agree, I mean, I'm good with it.
I, I think that's a motion, I'll second.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Gentlemen, I'll leave you to my contact information.
All right, that'd be awesome.
I am over our Oklahoma region for our air services. We do have ground services in several areas, not necessarily up in this region yet.
If they're not busy, if they're not busy hauling patients, you reckon we're going to get them, take us on a helicopter hauling out or? I mean, I'm just asking, you know?
$70.
Unfortunately, they don't like that on the insurance side. As fun as it would be to take the doors off the two hogs.
I understand, you know?
I'd be right, if they were allowed, I'd be right there with you.
Work on that.
I'll see what I can do. If there's any questions that come up, any concerns, any need for discussion or anything like that, my cell phone number and my U-Lo is up on there. I will be, as we, as the needs arise with staffing, I also fly as a air assault paramedic, depending on what the need is. So I'll be up here Thursday through Saturday flying as well, covering some shifts, so.
Welcome down to Oklahoma.
Yeah, I appreciate it, we're very excited to get started and looking forward to working with, with all of you in the community.
Well, well, well.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Say bye. Number six, discuss possible action regarding a code op form 324A claiming for part, for Project JP 31778, or N2C, code four for District One. Write the legal, prepare easements, two parcels and drive away staking, two parcels in the amount of $3,600 assigned to Pinnacle Consulting Management Group.
That's from the bridge up there, I saw it, it's all Smarter Bridge. I move we do that. I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, David, you'll have three places to sign on here. Thank you.
Number seven, discuss possible action regarding the special apportionment for Freedom Schools and the special apportionment for county for December 1 through December 14th, 2023.
Okay, so Rachel said that this is due to money coming in and we need to do the apportionments for the Freedom School. It changes the county, but it doesn't change any of our aliments. But it, but since it's part of the county, we don't have any paperwork to sign or anything like that. We just need to approve that she's doing that so that they can go ahead and get the bills paid.
I move you, sir, I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Doesn't really decide on that?
No.
To prove it.
That she can do that.
Number eight, discuss possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway D1 CIRV to Highway D1 Personal Services and D2 CIRV to D2 Personal Services in the amount of $14,869.28 each.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Aye.
Aye.
You only decide three places, David?
Number nine, discuss possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Free Fair Premium Capital Outlay to Free Fair Premium M&amp;O to finish out the year in the amount of $20,000.
So this is that fee account that we use, you know, for the other buildings? And they're, it's just transferring from that capital outlay to the, to M&amp;O so they can use it for paying some bills?
I'll make the motion.
I'll move, I'll second that. Aye. Aye. Number 10, discuss possible action regarding rescinding approved of the Williams Midstream Gas Services permit for District 3 that was approved on December 4th meeting due to Williams placing the project on hold.
Yeah.
I'll take that motion to rescind that, I'll second that.
All right.
This one?
Yep.
Number 11. Can you order it at one time?
No.
They're all about different numbers, so.
I sure can, sorry.
Are they all the same amount?
No, they're different dollar amounts too.
Number 11, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract WD, number WD 2-1 for Catherine.
I'll move we do so, I'll second that.
And that's in the amount of $53,411. And there's two, there's one place to sign, John, but there's two for, for...
Oh, for, they're both for him?
Yeah.
Okay, just him. Over there.
Where it says mayor, board chair.
Same place on both of them?
Uh-huh.
On all of them?
Yeah, all of them would be like that.
Okay, number, number 12. Motion carry. Number 12, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract number WD 2-3 for Tacoma Fire Department.
And that's in the amount of $35,000.
I'll make the motion, I'll second that.
Number 13, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract number WD 24-5 for Freedom Fire Department.
You make it. And that's in the amount of $52,922.99.
Number 14, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract number WD 24-6 for Greenleaf Fire Department.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Aye. Aye. Number 15, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract WD 24-7 for Winoka Fire Department. Don't move.
I'll second.
Aye.
And that's in the amount of $59,472.31.
Number 16, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract number WD 24-8 for Woods County Rural Water District 2. Don't move.
I'll second.
And that's in the amount of $32,000.
Number 17, discuss possible action regarding the REIT grant contract number WD 24-9 Woods County Rural Water District Number 3. Don't move.
Second.
And that's in the amount of $66,909.
I think 75 was the limit though, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So everybody was considerably younger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number 18, discuss possible action regarding the resolution for the 2024 Fair Board Election.
So I set it up for, that they'll need to come to my office to pick up the form if they want to file, January 8th through January 12th, and then the election will be held at you guys' offices on January 16th, which is a Tuesday, I think, between hours of 10 and noon. And so it's just a normal...
Like one member on each, and all of them, everybody got somebody up, but just like one member for each district?
Laura Radford, Jason, and Henry, and Kevin Pebleton are the three that are...
I'll make the motion that this is appropriate or good or whatever, I'll second.
Aye. Is Pebleton in my?
Yeah, Pebleton's in yours.
Uh-huh.
Laura's in mine, Henry's in his.
All three of them people probably wants...
I'm sure they have their... I guess I think Kevin may.
Yeah, Kevin, but he's on the school board.
Yeah.
Doing something else?
He has himself on the school board, so he might, I mean, got problems with it.
Number 19, discuss possible action regarding the San Rats Edition Flat Matt. I talked to that fella, told him what the state wanted. He was supposed to talk to the city, I don't, I don't really know. He's built him roads and I told him he's got to maintain all that stuff, but we're not going to do anything other than accept his plot there. So... So that's a motion for me.
Okay. So there's four of them and you can sign.
He's coming in here. So what, what will you have to take care of, John?
Nothing.
Oh, my, my only question is, is he, he got to approve the names of the streets and all that stuff?
Uh, well, I think they, they, I think they renamed the streets.
There's Pinto, Navy, Bean, and Lima.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure he was good with them and that's all I know.
Uh, I didn't ask him, that's kind of what I think they told him. On the Florida's end of the streets and stuff.
911s.
Yeah.
Yeah, the addressing people as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's all about is...
Oh, the fit survey.
Yeah, right.
And we'll use this pen so...
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Or we need to sign.
Uh, right here, there's Randy, David, John.
Oh.
And there's four copies.
Oh, gotta do.
And you won't be able to put them on top of each other?
No, once we sign one, I'll need to move it. Because it'll smear.
You know, we use all those plastic?
Yeah.
It's like plastic stuff.
Yeah, that's why it's hard to write on, it's smeared. Okay.
Start right here.
Okay.
You already signed them all, didn't you?
Yeah.
What time's sales start?
October.
Wonder what they tell you?
I got better stuff to do, so.
That's a good thing that happens.
Yeah. I thought it was tomorrow.
Yeah, but you told me, I saw it this, this morning or today, I was like, Randy, it's mine.
I think originally, I know I was told for 19th, but it doesn't matter, all the workforce fits in, that's... Clip it and picture it or something, all that stuff. I'm sure not all the work, but all the work I was involved in.
Number 20, discuss possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lawn and parking lot for the Bank Central Big Crews and Car Show.
September 22nd through?
September 22nd, yeah.
Twenty, 20th through the 22nd, yeah.
Oh, is that happening, multiple ones?
They do have two car shows.
This summer.
Yeah, they do have two of them anymore.
Oh, it's September.
This one's in September.
Approving it later.
Yeah, went in, except the date, so.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm, I'll second.
Randy, you?
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Yeah, it seems like that's a little bit out there, but I guess they just want to make sure they got this.
And so nothing else?
Yeah, it gets, gets shut in there. Number 21. Something smelling, my smell finally come back. Discuss possible action regarding the surplus and junking of three Lenovo computers for the county clerk ID number F250-032, comma, F250-034, comma, F250-038.
I'll move, all right. I'll, I'll move.
Did I pronounce that right? How do you say that word?
Close enough.
Lenovo?
Lenovo.
Lenovo, something.
And there's like, I don't know, four copies they have to assign.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Motion here. Number 22, new business. Anybody have any new business?
Mr. Was there much discussion on the CDL deal after the meeting the other day?
Oh, yeah, there was quite a bit. They, I probably did the biggest for a minute is that it was all about the paying the instructor.
Right, that's what I was.
And nobody knew. I, I, they're gonna check to see if that's legal process and all that. That was the only question I had, whether it was legal to do that.
Oh, Perch done? Is that what he done, Jason? Some kind of CDL instructor?
He does that for the go tech, but, but this is.
CD or something?
Yeah.
Well, it's county.
Well, county, Reese Fadell is doing it over Garfield County. And he's got a guy that they sent to an LTAP program that they trained him to be an instructor. So they're having a class in Garfield County right now and I think there's some Grant County people going in. But anyway.
It's cheaper than a truck driver's go.
Well, that and, and what they do in this deal is they, so, so you have an instructor, then we, they, they instruct these people for like three weeks. For three or four weeks or any way.
I forget the amount, but it's only three days a week.
Three days a week, three hours a day and stuff like that.
It's just a half a month.
And then they send them back to you and you put them with one of your truck drivers.
Do a little more hands-on training.
To do their driver's ed, I mean, like driving deal. And then when they're done and ready to go, they call down to the state and they send them to the truck driver.
Well, they can go to an LTAP class and get certified.
Yeah, they could get tests.
And they could probably do.
Our people, yeah, our people get certified to test.
Yeah.
So like the only thing is, like if, if you teach this class and you're also certified to test, you can't test the class that you taught. But I mean, I just thought it would be.
And, and the only debate, everybody thought it was a good deal. The only debate and the only thing I'm curious is how, is how you're going to compensate those people that went to the class and then, yeah, whether the counties, it needs to be decided whether the guys sending people are paying.
Right, and I, I mean, I, I just thought it was, to me, it was like, if we could do that, then it would be easier to hire somebody and have them on and training while you're.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You'd be getting.
It, it's a good deal. There was no question about that. It was also a debate about paying the instructors. Who was gonna compensate?
They need to compensate the county.
Because he's working for another county employee. And then, you know, just wanted to get it legal to pay the guy.
Kind of where the.
Yeah. Pay the guy or the county for each time.
And they're gonna try to figure that out or?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that sounds like a good deal.
That's all I.
Number 23, include this fruit blanket purchase order.
We do that.
I'll second that.
Number 24, motion to adjourn.
I'm ready.